Okay. We'd like to call the meeting of the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners to order, and we'll be led in prayer by Commissioner Turner and Commissioner Nipper. I believe you'll be leading us in our pledge to our flag. Thank you.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, it is good to be here again this evening, Lord. We're thankful for the opportunity that's been presented to each one of us, Lord, to represent our constituents. And we have a number of prayer requests here this evening, Lord. We think about one of our young students here, Baylor Bramble, Lord, and the injuries that he's sustaining, Lord. We just want to ask that you be with the doctors and his family as they're going through trying times now. Just be with the doctors and the decisions that they need to make for that young man. And we just ask that you touch his body and that you be with his family and let them know that their community supports them and that we love them as a family. And we're thankful for Commissioner Schaefer and his knee replacement. Glad to see him back on his feet. We thank you for being with him, and we pray for Commissioner Allen's son recovering from surgery. A number of things, Lord, that we're bringing in prayer, but we're thankful as a community that we rally around each other, and we're proud to be from Rutherford County. Ask that you be with us tonight, that we may honor you as we go through this agenda, that we make you proud and that we make our constituents proud by how we conduct ourselves with each other. We ask this in the name of your Son, Jesus. Amen.
(Inaudible)
Okay.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Here.
Commissioner Piercy?
Here.
Commissioner Jordan?
Here.
Commissioner P.
Here.
Commissioner Cook?
Here.
Commissioner Jergen?
Here.
Commissioner Kush?
Present.
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Commissioner Gurley?
Here.
Commissioner Turner?
Here.
Commissioner Allen?
Here.
Commissioner Stevens?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Baum?
Here.
Commissioner Nipper?
Here.
Commissioner Dodd?
Here.
Commissioner Phillips?
Here.
Commissioner McAdoo?
Here.
Commissioner Gooch?
Here.
And Commissioner Serenya?
Here.
Twenty present.
All right. Thank you very much. You have received a copy of the minutes, and do we have a motion considering their approval? Commissioner Phillips?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I've reviewed those, find them in order, and move that they be approved.
All right. Do we have a second from Commissioner Nipper? Anyone have any corrections or additions they want to make? If not, then all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you very much. First on our agenda is a resolution of sympathy on behalf of a wonderful lady that has lived with us more than a century. It's Dora Rucker, and we're calling Commissioner McAdoo.
This lady was really a remarkable lady. I think some of you know, she's probably like you heard to say in "The hardest working person in show business." She probably was one of the hardest working persons in Rutherford County when it came to voting and registering people to vote. Within our block, I think I lived in the political block. I got to tell this. In my living room, Ms. Dora and the Democratic Women was meeting, and in the kitchen, it was her brother and my granddad and the Republicans meeting all in the same house. So as little kids, we'd run to the living room and get the cake from the ladies, but we wanted to be with the men, so we grabbed the cake and then we'd run back in the kitchen to be with the men. But she really was a remarkable lady. Resolution of sympathy. Whereas it was with great sadness that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners learned of the death of Ms. Dora "Fruzy" Robertson Rucker, a former member of the Rutherford County Election Commission and friends of many. And whereas Ms. Rucker was preceded in death in 1998 by her beloved husband of 62 years, Chester A. Arthur Rucker, and is survived by her nephew, Joe Wallace Robertson, and his wife Anita. Two great nephews, Veronica Carrie Hammond and Coletta Donald Smith. Great, great, great nephews and nieces. Carrie the second, Charisse Kennedy, Donald the second, and Alicia, and the nieces and nephews of her beloved husband. And whereas Ms. Rucker was a successful business beautician for over 60 years and was referred to as the Avon Lady because she also sold Avon for more than 62 years. And whereas she spent 14 years of her 104 years on the Rutherford County Election Commission from 1993 to 2007, and was the first African American in the history of Murfreesboro to be elected to serve on the election commission. And whereas she gave a lot of time and effort to the betterment of our community and was a member of many civic community and social organizations, including the St. Clair advisory board from 1997 to 2003, the NAACP, Democratic Women, Community Bible Class, Homemakers Club, Eastern Star Beautification Club, Board of We Care Daycare Center, Church Woman United, and ABWA. And whereas since 1928, Ms. Rucker served as a faithful member of First Baptist Church on East Castle Street and was still an active member until her health began to fail her. And whereas we know that her passing has caused great sadness to her family and friends. Now therefore be it resolved that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners at the regular session of this 12th day of November 2015 does hereby extend sincere sympathy to the family of Mrs. Rucker. And be it resolved that a copy of this resolution of sympathy be forwarded to the family of Mrs. Rucker by the clerk of this legislative body, and I so move.
Second, Mr. P. and Phillips and others, I'm sure. All right. All of you in favor of that, then, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner McAdoo, and it is certainly a tribute to have had a lady of that character live with us so long and be so active and really contribute so much to Rutherford County. Okay. We don't have any public comments requested tonight, so Commissioner Turner, we're ready for elections and confirmations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, you'll find in front of you on your iPad a list of notaries that we need to move. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for their approval.
Second, Commissioner Jordan. All right. All of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Next, we need to fill a county general employee vacancy on the insurance committee. Steering would like to recommend Mr. Joseph Hafner. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for his approval.
And the second, Commissioner Johnson. Anyone else have any questions or discussions or other nominations? All right. There being none, all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Steering, we'd like to announce the following vacancies. Vacancy on the Agriculture Advisory Board, farm woman, farmer, and two commissioners. Steering would like to announce two vacancies on Community Care Board of Directors. Steering would like to announce county general employee vacancy on the Insurance Committee. Steering would like to announce two vacancies on Correctional Work Center Board of Directors. And Steering would like to announce two vacancies on Public Building Authority. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman. Now, resolution to approve the consent agenda. We'll call on Commissioner Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. I've looked at that, found it in order, and unless anyone wishes to remove any item from the consent agenda, I move that it be approved.
Okay. Do we have a second on that?
Excuse me.
Commissioner Dodd, thank you very much. Any other discussion or questions here, then? All right. Please cast your votes. Record the votes, please.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Twenty yes. Motion passes.
All right. Thank you very much. There is not any unfinished business. Now we can then begin with the reports by our standing committees, and we'll call on Commissioner Jordan for our Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee.
Item L1A, General Fund Budget Amendment. Be resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows. County mayor, decrease unassigned fund balance, $26,000. Increase expenditures, legal services, $26,000. That's to pay for the legal part of the circuit court settlement on the computer system. Fire and rescue, decrease unassigned fund balance, $13,940. Increase overtime, $11,650 and related benefits. That's the overtime for the fire and rescue personnel that went to South Carolina to help out during the flood. And Chancery Court, decrease unassigned fund balance, $1,700. Increase expenditures, data processing services. That's for more licenses, as far as some changes with the court. More license agreements, basically. It made sense in budget, anyway. And resolve this 12th day of November 2015. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
And the second, who was that from? Mr. Turner, excuse me. All right. Thank you very much. We have a motion, the second. Does anybody have any questions or discussion about the general fund amendment? Mr. Schaefer?
(Inaudible). We should get re-approached from being mentioned.
I think so, yeah.
That is correct.
It may take a little while, but...
All right. If there are no other questions, then, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Please record the votes.
Twenty yes. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item L1B, resolution authorizing contribution to Lineball Library for Community Technology Center and related budget amendment. Whereas Section 5-9-109, inclusive Tennessee Code annotated, authorizes a candid legislative body to make appropriations to nonprofit charitable organizations. And whereas the Lineball Library Board recognizes the need to provide technology and meeting space in areas of low income and high demographics. And whereas the Lineball Library Board sees that that need being fulfilled by constructing a community technology center at a cost of $1,800,000 with funding requested from the city of Murfreesboro, Rutherford County, the state of Tennessee, and a local foundation. And whereas the Lineball Library Board requests a contribution, Rutherford County, of $400,000 to be contributed in two installments of $200,000 each from development tax reserves for the county fiscal year and current fiscal year and the fiscal year 2016-17. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that funding for Lineball Library be increased by $200,000 from development tax reserves for the fiscal year 2015-16, and $200,000 from development tax reserves be added to the contribution for fiscal year 1617 for the community technology center. And additionally, that the general fund be amended as follows as appropriate said contribution. Libraries, decrease restricted for capital projects, $200,000. Increase expenditures, contributions, $200,000. Resolve this 12th day of November 2015. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second, Commissioner Piercy and others. Any questions or discussion? Excuse me. All right. Mr. P. and then Mr. Nipper, please.
In budget, I brought up requesting the IDB Board's educational wing. Where are we at on that? And the main question I've gotten, maybe this is a question for our attorney, is will this motion restrict us from being able to use any money that they might have available for us?
The answer to the first question is I have had a conversation with the chairman of the IDB Board, and there appears to be a favorable possibility that we can get some money to offset what we would be contributing, and that meeting will be, I think, next Wednesday that I probably will be needing to attend. So it's not done for sure, but I think there's some indication there might be a real probability. Now, to the answer to the second part of that question, Mr. McCreary, did you understand what he was saying?
I don't. Could you repeat the question? Commissioner P.?
Well, my question basically is do we need to amend this so that we could pick up funds other than from the general fund? If they're from development tax, excuse me. This is basically saying these funds have got to come out of development tax. If we have another source, say for instance, IDB Board's educational wing there says, hey, we're going to come up with the money or a part of it, I think this motion needs to reflect that we can accept that money.
Well, I think you could. You could amend the resolution to that extent. I mean, I don't know if there'll be other money available from some other source, but if you think that that's a possibility, I think it could be amended to that end to leave that option open.
Well, the main question is I don't want this to stop us from being able to take money from another source.
And, yeah. And I think it could possibly be read that way, so I think you could include language about something to the effect of, or other sources there toward the bottom of the resolution.
Yes.
It could be amended to that effect.
Yeah. I don't want anybody here to think that I'm against this motion. I'm very much in favor of it, but, you know, if we don't have to dig into our hip pocket and there's money available there, I think that we need to make it available.
Okay. So there are two places there that we could say from development tax reserves or other sources, if available, twice in the third paragraph and the fourth paragraph. And Commissioner Schaefer is second in the other discussion regarding that. Okay. So I think we'll take that amendment. First, all of you in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Now, we have the motion on the floor to appropriate the approval of the 400th. And Mr. Nipper, I'm sorry, I overlooked your question.
Basically, what I'm thinking is that, you know, we've already given Lineball $1,400,000 this year, or, you know, to do various things such as what they're suggesting here. And reading through here, you know, it says that this will be a bridge gap between literacy and technology, equipping residents. We have night schools now that does teach our residents of the county. You know, it also says this is to serve small business incubator by offering private meeting rooms. Well, isn't that part of what the Chamber of Commerce is supposed to be doing? I'm kind of hesitant to give them $400,000 more over the next two years because, you know, when the DUI and the drug court lost their grant from the federal government, we all cringed that we might have to give them $60,000 this year to operate, and we know how successful those are because there being the drug court and the DUI courts being patterned across the state from our example. So I'm kind of saying, you know, looking at the nonprofits this year that we gave out, you know, we gave Reed to Succeed $2,500, you know, special kids $2,500, domestic violence program $23,000. What I'm saying is we've got these other programs that I feel can use the money, use money from our sources here better. And, you know, I would like to make a motion, you know, that we at least defer action on this resolution authorizing the contribution to the Lineball Library for Community Technology Center and the related amendment until at least the December Commissioners' meeting, which would give all of us more time to even look at this that was laid on our desk tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll see if some others want to make some comments, and we may want to let our people from Lineball. We've, they've presented this before the Education Committee with their full recommendation. It went to the Budget Committee with the full recommendation that's come to this group here. Do any of the rest of you want to make any comments regarding this? Mr. Dodd?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I'm on the committee that heard this, and I initially was reluctant as well, but as we consider the percentage of our contribution to the total of this endeavor, it's relatively small. This came on the final meeting we had with the library fund group was on the heels of the workforce development meeting that we recently had in the county. We're desperate for ways to develop our workforce, and this is one of those ways. I think we have to have an abundance of ways. I've discovered in my due diligence, considering this, that the more opportunities we have in a variety of areas of town and a variety of locales, it just helps serve more people. So I personally am in support of this. The group that has put this together has been incredibly diligent over a period of at least two years, and they've really exhausted a lot of the avenues. They've had wonderful responses to all of our questions in the committee meeting, so I understand the reluctance, but I, for one, having been present at the meetings, am in full support of this. There are representatives of Lineball Library here that would be glad to come up and make a presentation if it is needed, I think, and...
Hey, Mr. Gurley wants to speak just a moment here, and we'll see if, and Mr. Baum.
I was, of course, on the Health Committee that heard the initial presentation. I think we have to look at this as part of a much larger overall, long-term project. This is a capital investment that's being contributed to not only by Rutherford County government, but by the city of Murfreesboro, by the state of Tennessee, and by other charitable I asked a lot of questions and made a lot of comments in the initial committee meeting, but after hearing everything and carefully considering it, I fully back it. This is, I think, just the beginning. We've got to coordinate, Commissioner Nipper mentioned about chamber, and this will go along very well with some of the initiatives in terms of expanding broadband service, workforce development, and so on, that the chamber has going on. There are other initiatives aside from this that will dovetail with this particular project, I think, very well that are not in the forefront tonight. So I believe that overall, this is a good project, and when you consider the amount of money or the percentage of funds that the county's putting into it compared to other entities and organizations, then it's a good investment. Thank you.
Commissioner Baum?
First, I need to disclose that I serve on the Lineball Library Foundation, and I've worked with this committee on this project, but I do want to make a few remarks in response to Commissioner Nipper's concerns. First of all, this is money for a capital project, not for operating budget like some of the other entities you mentioned are receiving money for. The county's percent of this project is only 15%. We would be contributing about $400,000. The city has already agreed to contribute $400,000. The state, we believe, will contribute $100,000. Private entities will, and charities, will contribute up to $900,000. So our piece here is a relatively small piece. Again, it's 15%. And the center offers many different benefits to the community, and I want to just highlight a couple of them because these are benefits that are outside of the normal school day and school system. First of all, students who need to have access to computers and the internet to finish their homework can go to this center and finish their assignments there. I know from working with students at MTSU that in order to find a job, you have to almost apply for the job online exclusively. There's no, there's very rarely paper applications to apply for jobs anymore. And in addition to needing a computer and the internet to apply for the job, you need the internet just to search for the job. So we've got unemployed individuals in the county who are trying to find jobs, and I think that they're really limited if they don't have access to a computer or the internet to search for jobs and to apply for jobs. And then a third benefit would be to help small businesses in the community have a place to meet, give them access to computer and the internet and things like that. And so I feel like this is the county's attempt to help people who are trying to help themselves. Again, students trying to complete homework assignments, unemployed individuals trying to find jobs, small businesses trying to meet and become more productive. So I support this project. I think that the benefits it offers really very quickly outweigh the cost, particularly the county's contribution, when you think about how many people would have to find a job before the benefits from that would outweigh the amount of money we're putting into the project. Thank you.
Commissioner McAdoo?
I also serve on that committee, and basically speaking, this would be in my district. The main reason I love the project is where it's located. It's located in a position, in a place where the students from MTSU can walk and tutor children that need to be tutored, that their parents or whatnot cannot afford the tutoring cost. That's number one. Number two, the location, like Commissioner Baum said, is in a location where we got the university right in the back door, that they can walk over and help adults be able to get on the computer systems to look for jobs. And the area is an area that is really needed in Murfreesboro. We looked at the areas all over Murfreesboro, and we were fortunate that the city of Murfreesboro let us build this on the campus of Hopgood. And if you know where Hopgood is, you know that it's easy accessible to MTSU. I support this project 100%, and when you look at the return that we're going to get for investing $400,000, you should be able to vote yes for this project.
Hey, does anyone else wish to speak? Mr. Nipper, do you wish to speak again? Yes, sir, then.
While I take all the comments that were made tonight, you know, into account and appreciate every one of them, and I'm not saying I'm not for technology and all of that, but, you know, there's, in this document, you know, that was handed out, there's, you know, areas that greatly concern me. One of them says, "While open to all citizens of Rutherford County with the central location of the CTC, it would not be feasible for those in the outlined areas of the county to use the facility." So this is not for the whole county. This is for just the surrounding areas of Murfreesboro here. And second, you know, it says, "If this proves successful..." Well, to me, that's saying, well, boy, we'd have a doubt going in already if it's successful. You know, we've already been burned by a million-dollar technology gaffe that, you know, I'm real leery of spending money on technology at this point until we, as commissioners, can come up with an idea about the technology and how we oversee technology. So that's just my point of view. Like I said, I'm not against technology, but I'm just, at this point, against this for a while. Thank you.
Is it, say, Mr. Dodd? Excuse me. Where do you go next?
I just want to point out one thing. Just the, in this memo we have before us, it states that if the project ceases to be part of the library system, the city of Murfreesboro would reimburse the county their portion paid at a prorated amount. So that could address all of our concern. We actually discuss it at length. So does that need to be in the motion? Mr. Mayor? Does a statement state saying that if this does not succeed, we will be reimbursed a prorated amount need to be part of the legal document? That's in the record from the last two meetings. I know that much.
It's in the record of the minutes of both the Health and Ed and the...
Okay. And if that's adequate, I'm more than satisfied. But, thank you.
Does anyone else wish to make a comment? Ms. Allen and Mr. Reed?
I had an opportunity to listen to the presentation on this several times as well, so the conversation's been going on a lot longer than just tonight. A few of the things that haven't been mentioned, we are excited about the location, the fact that the city donated the land that's not even considered in their $400,000. They're doing the land plus $400,000. But it's one of those things where it seems like it was almost meant to be because of where the broadband internet is and the fact that you have access to it so close to this property. It's one of those things where if we had tried to run it, if we had to purchase another parcel of land and run it... parcel of land and run it, it would have been much more cost prohibitive. This group has done such incredible due diligence. I was so incredibly impressed. Every time we asked them a question, they had already taken that well into consideration. They'd already done their research. They were the most prepared group of people I've ever had a conversation with who've come to us and asked for money. Many of the things that they took into consideration as well were offering, you know, we have so many English as a second language students who, who are coming, you know, you could have families who could be coming here and be, you know, those parents could be learning English, you know, while their children are at school. We can't, we can't underemphasize that enough. I think we speak over 40 languages in our school right now. It would be one of the most sophisticated technology centers that we could have and, and I kind of think about, you know, nothing ventured, nothing gained. And yes, it's always a little bit of a gamble. I think we're hedging our bet because the property could come back. We could be reimbursed for that if, if that's necessary, but it would be the foundation for satellite facilities, you know, if it does work. But I just, you know, when we talk about, you know, jobs in this county, it's directly tied to education and all of that is directly tied to technology. And so, there, there's nothing more that we can spend our money on to get any bigger bang for our buck than to have a very sophisticated technology center in this county. So, I hope you'll support it. If you have questions, I would really encourage you, before we defer or put this off, because it is a time-sensitive issue. There's a lot of pieces to this puzzle that had to come together from all the different entities for them to be able to stay on track. So, I'm sure they'll be more than happy to come up and answer any of the questions that you have. They'll talk to you as long as you want to talk to them and I promise you, you will be impressed with the research that they've done. Thank you.
Commissioner Reed?
Point of order. Mr. Mayor, point of order. It's past 6:30. We have, well, we scheduled a public hearing. Don't we have to put it at 6:30?
All right, let me, let, one more person speak and if others still want to speak or if you want to hear from the Lineball Library people, we'll have to, I guess, sort of table this momentarily and then come back to it later. Commissioner Reed, we're going to let you speak and then if, we'll see if anybody else wishes before we go farther.
I just wanted to mention, you're talking about deferring. The Health and Ed deferred this already once. I mean, when it was first brought to us, we deferred it the first time because we had some of the same questions you had there, Commissioner, and we wanted to think about it and do a little investigating and we did. And, and being a commissioner from out in the rural area where I come from, I questioned the fact of, you know, is this really what we wanted to do too? Because out there in that far western area, we have a small library with two computers. And I thought, "Well, you know, do we want to spend this money here or do we want to spend money out there to help in that areas like that?" So, we deferred it at that time and then we come back and gave me time to go out and investigate, to see what's going on, to see what we wanted to do. And I learned a whole lot in that one month of going out and knowing what's going on. And you mentioned the fact that it, in this little statement that we received here tonight, "It would not be feasible for those in the outlying areas of the county to use the facility." I believe if you'll look at that sentence again, it says, "It would not be as feasible for those in the outlying areas of the county to use the facility." That little "as" in there has a lot to do with it because where I come from, it's not as feasible to use the avenue as it is here in Murfreesboro. And, but yet, we still come in every so often and we run our cars in here and it's become a very important part of us, where I think the technology center to the people out there where I'm at could become an important part when it comes to applying for jobs due to the fact of the lack of internet that's available to the individuals out there. Because when you try to download something out there, you could possibly get the internet service from a lightning bug about as fast as you could from some of what we have to wait on when it's coming to. So, I could see this center somewhat like in the years when I was growing up as a child, the importance of Lineball Library was for going and getting books to read because it wasn't available to us that time. We're now in the technology area where we have to go and find it where we can and maybe this will get us a start and that's why I'm for it.
All right. Timeout here now. Does anyone else wish to speak? Are you ready to vote? We do have a motion on the floor in a second.
Question.
Call for the question by Mr. McAdoo. We have a second on the question?
Second.
Second? All right, Mr. Koosh. All of you in favor of calling for the question, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, then, we are, have a call for the question. We're ready to vote, so please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes, please.
Nineteen yes, one no. Motion passes.
Very much. Okay, next is our public hearings and our apologies, mine especially for being now five minutes past 6:30. I didn't anticipate it taking quite that long, so I apologize for that. All right, we have two rezoning requests tonight. And first, it's rezoning request 15-a-0-10. This is Mr. Caldwell-Lucas for Grove Park Land Company, located at the northwest corner of Cut Off Road and Lebanon Pike, and the existing zoning is residential medium density. Proposed zoning is planned unit development on a site of approximately 88 acres that they have requested for rezoning 80 acres. So, we're going to let Mr. Demosi give us a review of that. So, Mr. Demosi?
Yes, Mayor Burgess, thank you and good evening, Mayor, members of the commission. This first application we have tonight, the properties are located at the northwest corner of the intersection of Lebanon Pike and Cut Off Road. The applicant is proposing a residential-only planned unit development, or PUD, that includes 183 single-family units. The maximum number of units that you would typically see in an RM district of this size would be about 232 lots. Now, that's a gross density of just taking the, the square footage, the minimum square footage and, and putting that into the acreage, but that doesn't take into account things like your easements, your roads, lot configuration, those kind of things. So, it's doubtful you could get that many lots. Staff thinks it's probably closer to the neighborhood of 130 to 140 lots. The pattern book has been uploaded to your iPads for your review tonight as well. Staff has been working with this application for some time now. A neighborhood meeting was held by the developer prior to the July 13th, 2015 Planning Commission meeting. After hearing the comments from the neighbors, the applicants withdrew their request from that July meeting in order to make some modifications to the plan. The applicant then asked for a second deferral for the August 10th, 2015 Planning Commission meeting because they were still in the process of amending their plans and had not had a second neighborhood meeting that they said they would have. They did hold the second neighborhood meeting on August 25th. Many of those present were concerned about the commercial element of the plan, the possible traffic improvements that might be required as a result of the development, the lot sizes that are in the development, and also the size of the homes themselves. Revisions were submitted to staff prior to the September 14th meeting, but the application was ultimately deferred again by the applicant. The applicant then held a third neighborhood meeting on October 5th. The biggest changes made to the application at this point have been the removal of the commercial area, originally was for the entire properties. It was about eight to nine acres of a commercial area. That has been removed. They've also removed a connection between their proposed subdivision and the Harvest Woods subdivision, which is located immediately to the west. They also have added an access point off of Lebanon Pike and identified a number of road improvements along Cut Off Road, Lebanon Pike, and that intersection. And there'll be some more information about that, the applicant's going to get into that in a little bit here in just, in a few moments. The public hearing before the Planning Commission on October 12th was well-attended. Many of those same concerns regarding traffic, lot size, and whatnot were presented at that time. Ultimately, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of the application by unanimous vote with traffic improvements as warranted by T-DOT. The applicant is present and I know they have a presentation to make, but I'll be happy to make any, or answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Have any questions of Mr. Demosi first? Mr. Schaefer?
Pocket guy's hooked on the knob. The forfeiture bond on here. What is it exactly now that we require the builders, the developers to put up so that if something should happen in the future, like roads aren't finished or something like this?
Oh, you're talking about bonds on subdivision plats and those kind of things?
Right.
Typically, when they get to the point of wanting to record a final plat and start building homes, they have to bond what other, whatever road improvements, typically the top coat of the road, if there's any exist, or remaining drainage improvements that need to be done, those are also included in the bond amount as well.
How much do you say?
It, it varies. There, we have some set amounts in the office and there's a formula that goes into it.
Basically, we're not accepting bonds.
Yeah, well, exactly. Yeah, we, yeah, and for the, and that, that's a very good point, Mayor Burgess, thank you. We, I think, using the lingo, we just call them all bonds just for simplicity, but we don't accept actual insurance bonds anymore. It's letters of credit, cash bond, you know, that, that kind of thing. So, that, that is accurate.
Are there any more questions for Mr. Demosi? Okay, then, thank you then. All right, so we're going to have a public hearing and I'll make a few preliminary comments here. We're going to have a presentation, I think, from the applicant. Is that correct, Mr. Demosi?
On this one, yes.
Right. And we don't know how much time you've got or material you're going to present, but try to limit that in a neighborhood of five minutes, hopefully. We'll see how you come out with that. And then we'll have the public hearing. We'd like for you to possibly consider three minutes is enough time. You're not limited precisely to that, but I think that would be a target we'd like for you, you to use and then be respectful of, and of each other's comments and we just hope that you'll work together whoever has comments they'd like to make. So, there, with all that being said, we're going to declare the public hearing for rezoning request 15-a-10 open. Those of you that wish to speak for or against the, this proposal may do so. So, we'll first give the opportunity for the applicant to make their presentation. Give us your name and address each person that wishes to speak. And Brian, do you have their presentation queued up? Okay.
Evening, Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Rob Mulchun. I live at 3912 Roland Road here in Rutherford County. I'm a landscape architect with SEC. I'm here tonight in behalf of Grove Park Land Company to present to you a request for rezoning of 80 acres on the corner of Cut Off Road and Lebanon Pike in regards to creating the PUD for Cuthbert Retreat. You can see the existing site, more or less, the grading and drainage, the existing stormwater flow, more or less flows from Lebanon Pike and Cut Off Road to an unnamed tributary that leads to the east fork of Stones River. You can see, I don't know if slides are front or... Some of the pictures here, the slide's not actually working the way it should. The, the site itself in regards to the property, the corner of Cut Off Road, and moving into, the main entrance will be at number four there, off of Deborah Drive. It's, right now, it's currently a three-way intersection of Deborah Drive. The main entrance to development will start there. As Mr. Demosi alluded to, Harvest Woods subdivision is next door, immediately to the west. Roanoke subdivision is to the southwest and Tenpenny Place is to the south where Deborah Drive and the future entrance to the community will start. The plan for this project is 183 single-family dwelling units on roughly 80 acres to give us roughly a, a net, a gross density of about 2.2 units to the acre. Mr. Demosi did allude to the fact that, in, in looking at this, that straight-up zoning would allude to about 2.9 units to the acre for maybe 232 units. So, we're definitely a little, and we're definitely under the overall cap on, on that. The plan itself, as you can see, the end of Roanoke, at the end of Deborah Drive is the main entrance to the community, which then, as you drive into the community, as a terminus feature, will be the amenity center, which is more going to be a cabana house with a pool and a tot lot as the main focal amenity feature for the community itself. And the, behind that will be the step system. The, we will be doing a, roughly about 20 acres of step to suffice the 183 lots from a drainage standpoint. This is more or less a phasing. I, this is the concept for the phasing for the development, starting with the entrance and going back towards the amenity complex, which will allow access for the step system as well. We're potentially looking at six phases of development with a potential for five to six-year build-out on this project. 183 lots, as I've alluded to, one, one and a half, two-story homes. Minimum square footage on these homes would be 1,800 square feet up to, you know, 3,200 or so plus square feet, depending on the size and the architecture that's chosen by the builder and the, and the lot and the person buying the lot. At least three bedrooms in every, in every home and minimum lot size is 7,800 square feet. Setbacks traditionally 35-foot front, seven and a half on the sides, which gives you 15-foot separation and 20 on the rear. Building materials, the building materials on these homes will be 70% masonry products, whether it be stone, brick, or hardy board or cement board, with a maximum of 30% of this being a vinyl siding, whether that be, you know, just for trim and soffit or other elements within the architectural, you know, of the building itself. This is some of the characteristics of some of the homes. You know, again, front-entry loaded garages, brick and stone, masonry products with a little bit of vinyl siding in places that need, you know, trim and soffit areas. Two-car garage. We're talking about siding all front yards, driveways will be all concrete and garages will all be front-loaded product. And this will be a 50-foot right-of-way in conjunction with the street standards currently and everything will be built to standards for the Rutherford County street standards. All utilities will be underground and the applicant is going to be dedicating five feet of right-of-way back to the county with this project with the anticipation of a, in the long-term roadway procedure, side of the things with the county, the widening of Cut Off Road to a 60-foot right-of-way eventually is what the plan is. Again, this is some of the images of stuff, of the amenity features that were planned and putting in the, in the project. Again, we talked about a pool, there's the cabana house, tot lot, which would be the main focus. And one of the other elements that we'll be planning into this is a nature trail along the unnamed tributary to more or less create a pedestrian circular feature throughout the community. So, if somebody wanted to jog through the community, there's a circular loop so that once they do get around to the backside of the community, they can come back along that trail and have more or less a, a running track throughout, around the community. There'll be two main entrances to this community. Of course, the first one on Cut Off Road will be the main entrance that comes along with section one, phase one of the project off of Cut Off Road. And, and we came back and we went through some discussions with staff in regards to the secondary entrance that has moved around, but we've now come to a consensus as to this entrance on Lebanon Pike, about halfway up Lebanon Pike is where our secondary entrance coming over to Lebanon Pike. And then also providing a sub-street to the north for any future development, being able to connect over our development on that side. We, as Mr. Demosi alluded to, we had some discussions and we've gone through a couple iterations between ourselves and the residents of Harvest Woods in regards to the cul-de-sacs along the western boundary. There was originally a potential for a connection to Amberly Street, which is currently already built in Harvest Woods that is stubbed out to this property. We were originally planning that connection, but we ran into a lot of, of the residents in Harvest Woods not wanting that connection, one, from the standpoint of construction traffic possibly running through there as this is built out, but also as connection point for our, you know, the residents of Cuthbert Retreat moving over to their community to get, or in or around Cut Off Road for any traffic concerns. With that said, we've also gone through a few off-site roadway and project improvements. The first one is based on our traffic studies by our traffic engineer. It is warranted at this point in time that the intersection of Cut Off Road and Lebanon Pike is currently not up, is not up to par in regards to traffic flow. It was one of the concerns that the residents of Harvest Woods and the Sperron communities had brought to our attention as well. With Wilson Elementary being down Cut Off Road, that backs up pretty heavily. So, what we're proposing tonight is that we will go ahead and we're going to move forward with adding an additional turn lane, a left-hand dedicated turn lane that will allow traffic to flow more freely between Cut Off Road and Lebanon Pike. It seems that there is the, you know, the small percentage that we've gone through in regards to the traffic study. The left-hand turn onto Lebanon Pike from Cut Off Road is what's backing up the traffic more or less on Cut Off Road. So, by proposing and putting this left-hand, dedicated left-hand turn lane in, this should help with the traffic flow off of Cut Off Road to Lebanon Pike. The next portion of this, I guess, would be kind of like phase two of our off-site improvements, is roadway improvements to Lebanon Pike itself in regards to... is roadway improvements to Lebanon Pike itself in regards to turn lanes off of Lebanon Pike to Cut Off Road. We'll be looking at turning, doing a left-hand as you're heading northbound on Lebanon Road, a left-hand lane on the Cut Off Road will be proposed in the future. And also a right-hand off of Lebanon Pike as you're heading south, a deceleration lane turning onto Cut Off Road. And then again, with the secondary entrance off of Lebanon Pike, the, a left-hand lane turn as you're heading north on Lebanon Pike into the subdivision on the connection road heading in. The last portion of our off-site improvements that we've talked about is a dedication of right-of-way to the county. We'll work with staff and the roadway department in regards to how this S-curve, there's been some discussion that was brought up during our discussions with our neighbors in regards to this S-curve being somewhat of a hazard at this point in time. We've come to, you know, realize that this may be one of those things that we would like to help out with. So our applicant is willing to dedicate a portion of the property in order to give the county ample land to fix this S-curve, if you want to call it an S-curve, to flatten it out and make it a little bit safer in regards to the traffic flow along that. I thank you all for your time and we'll be available for questions, myself and Representative from Grove Park here to answer any of your questions. Thank you.
Hey, hold on just a moment. Does anyone have a question that they'd like to ask this gentleman before we move on? Mr. Dodd?
If the developer wishes to deviate from the plan book presented, must they go back through Planning Commission, public hearings, and get approval?
We'll have to ask Mr. Demossi about that.
The quick answer to your question for major deviations, yes. For instance, if for some reason this development, the current developer decided to sell the project and somebody else wanted to put a different style of house on it, change any of the elements in the plan, those would probably rise to the level of what I would call a substantial or a major deviation to the plan. Now, there are some things staff can look at from an administrative standpoint, like if they wanted to shift some lot lines around, but they're not really changing the lot yield or anything like that. Minor things like that we can look at administratively, but if you're talking wholesale changes to the development, then that would have to come back through the Planning Commission and Board of Commissioners, yes.
Right. Anyone else have any questions? All right, thank you, sir. Excuse me, Mr. Piercy.
Yes, roughly twenty acres of this property will be dedicated as drip field for consolidated utility to house the step field system on that property. Do you have a number of acres that will be taken up by common areas?
Yes, the overall percentage of open space, we're required, of course, to have at least ten percent open space with a PUD request. Out of that acre, out of that acreage, we're required at least to have eight acres of open space, usable open space on the property. We're providing roughly nine acres, so we're actually at about eleven point four acres of usable open space on the property, aside from the acreage that's already dedicated for the step system, which is technically open space, but it's not usable open space on the property itself. So you're looking at about twenty-five percent of the overall property is step field systems, whether it be the drip field or the, you know, the areas that houses sand filters and such like that, going back. And then also, there's also about 2.25 acres of property that is set aside for stormwater detention on that, so that's about 2.8 acres on that. So in all, if you look at it from the standpoint of including the step, which you technically wouldn't, you're looking at roughly about, you know, fifteen, eight, you know, about fifteen percent of the property is set aside for open space, the usable open space or detention.
So you're saying we're losing basically thirty-five percent to the step and the common areas of the eighty acres?
Yeah, it's about thirty-nine, when you put it all together, it's about thirty-nine percent of the site is left to open space, whether it's usable or recreational space.
And how close together do we have?
There are supposed to be fifteen feet separation between the structures.
And that comes to two point one?
Two point two eight, two point two units to the acre on this project.
Anything else? All right, we will continue with the public hearing. Thank you, sir. Now, others that wish to speak for or against this particular request, now is your opportunity to come forward. Is anyone else that wishes to speak? I don't see anyone rising to come forward, so the public hearing is closed. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Piercy.
This is how the lead of the second meeting, identification of the going to the meeting started out a season about seven feet, uh, the third and down through. I'd like to think we've done a real good job, me and Mr. Demossi, on easing their pains and all, but really, I think we just wore them out. The Planning Commission meeting the other night, a couple spoke, four, more or less four, they had been appeased with their problems, more or less, one was kind of against. They did submit a petition, a hundred and twenty-five households that were not in favor of it, but of course, like I've heard it said before, it's not a popularity contest. I believe I heard Mr. Demossi make that comment one time on a petition. I've been kept in the loop very close with the developers. I've talked to the developers several times. They've brought me several maps of all their changes. I've met with the property owner. I've probably talked to a hundred people down there that live there. And like I said, over the time, they have played away. And you see tonight, there's no one here to even speak for or against it that lives there. Personally, which I know you're not supposed to have a personal opinion being a commissioner, I think that was in the oath, best I can remember, but you need to stand with your people, but evidently, they're not here or couldn't make it or whatever. If we offer a PUD development for a developer, I think we have to stay with it. I am not in favor of it at all of a PUD development, but I don't feel like we can take it away from these developers if we've offered them the opportunity to do it, and they have worked so hard in trying to meet all the regulations and change, all the changes that they've made. That area is very rural, very rural. You know, our schools out there are full, our ambulance services are worked hard, our fire department is in works now to improve. Every time someone comes up from one of the departments to a public safety meeting, we need more, we need more money for this, we need more people. If we continue to push a PUD development into a rural area, I think we need to be ready to put the money out there for them because we're gonna have to have it. With that said, reluctantly, I'm gonna move for this to pass.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Koush, other discussion. All right, you're ready to vote, obviously, so all of you in favor of this, then please say aye.
Aye.
Are those opposed? All right, that looks like it was unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Piercy. All right, now are we ready for rezoning request fifteen dash A-zero-eleven? On behalf of the applicant Brenda Benz located at eighty-nine ninety Manchester Pike, the existing zoning again is residential medium density and the proposed zoning is employment and activity center. And the size of this site is approximately eighty-three acres and approximately fifty-nine acres is being requested for rezoning. Mr. Demossi, give us your review.
Yes, Mayor Burgess, thank you. This property is located along Manchester Highway, just past the Eps Mill Road Manchester Highway intersection and right near the I-24 interchange at Eps Mill Road. Before I discuss the particulars of this case, I would like to go over the history. This property does have a little bit of history here. A similar application to this was submitted under our old zoning resolution back in May of two thousand and twelve. This request involved the subject property as well as additional property to the south. At the June eleventh, two thousand and twelve meeting, the Planning Commission recommended the application be deferred so that more information could be provided about infrastructure improvements and additional screening. There were many letters of opposition submitted to the Planning and Engineering Department about that particular application. Long story short, the application was withdrawn before it was reconsidered by the Planning Commission. After our current ordinance took effect, our zoning ordinance, in January of two thousand and thirteen, the applicant submitted a second application for this property. There was a neighborhood meeting on January seventeenth, two thousand and thirteen at the Whitworth Buchanan Middle School. The residents again voted, voiced, excuse me, most of the same concerns about inadequate roads, traffic, the views from Manchester Pike, and the proximity to residential areas. Again, this request, long story short, was ultimately withdrawn by the applicant. The application that we're considering now was resubmitted, again, earlier this year, but only with Ms. Benz's property, about eighty-three acres, being considered. The Planning Commission held a public hearing at their August tenth meeting. Several people spoke during the hearing and many concerns were presented, including many of the same that we've heard, the rural character of the area, traffic, some of the uncertainty of the uses proposed, and others. After the applicant's representative expressed a willingness to reduce the amount of area to be rezoned, the Planning Commission moved to defer this item in order to give the applicant an opportunity to meet with the neighbors, to discuss their concerns, and to see if a compromise could be reached. A neighborhood meeting was held on September first at, again, at Whitworth Buchanan Middle School. Many of those same issues discussed at the Planning Commission's meeting were discussed, again, in more detail at the neighborhood meeting. After discussing these concerns, the applicant's representative said he would discuss the issues with his client and also to see if any, again, any compromise could be reached. The applicant's representative also met with some of the neighbors on September twenty-eighth, and the amended request is what the applicant presented at the October twelfth Planning Commission meeting, and that's what's before you tonight. That proposed plan reduces the amount requested from eighty-three acres to approximately fifty-nine. No portion of the property along Manchester Highway is included as part of that request. Several people did speak during the public hearing on October twelfth, and while there was a consensus, although I wouldn't call it a unanimous consensus, among those presence that the reduced area was preferable to the original request, there were still concerns with the wide range of uses allowed in the EAC, Employment Activity Center zone. Representatives from the community asked for a second deferral to discuss the zoning classification requested for the property. They felt either perhaps commercial neighborhood or maybe commercial services, two of the other commercial zones we have in our zoning ordinance would be more appropriate classification. For your information, I did include in your, on your iPad uploads, a copy of, it's called the EAC, I forget exactly what I called it, but basically, it's a comparison. It tells you what uses are allowed in the EAC zone, but it kind of compares it to some of the other commercial zones, just to give you an idea of how the different approvals work. There was also discussion on creating what was being called a gateway for this interchange, and it's the first interstate interchange within Rutherford County coming from the southeast. Staff is generally in support of this idea, although at this time, the logistics have not been determined. We feel that this opportunity to create this kind of a gateway overlay, similar to what Murfreesboro City did with the Medical Center Parkway interchange, would be available whether or not this property is rezoned. So even if action is taken tonight on this, that opportunity still exists. For the Commission's information, we do prepare an annual work schedule for our Planning Commission, kind of an idea or an overview of the things we'd like to try to accomplish for the year, and we propose to put this particular item on the two thousand and sixteen work plan for the Planning Commission's consideration. Ultimately, the Planning Commission felt they had enough information to make a decision and recommended approval of the reduced request, the fifty-nine acres, by a unanimous vote. The applicant and their representative are present, and again, will be happy to answer any questions, and I know the applicant has a presentation, and I believe there's a second presentation as well. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Have some questions for Mr. Demossi? All right, thank you then. So we've already made our preliminary comments about the procedure here, so we're gonna let the applicant come forward and then we'll let the apparent spokesman for the opponents, they can make their presentation after that. But first, we're gonna call this meeting, the public hearing, to order, and we will let the applicant come forward with their presentation, please, first. And he's got that on one piece of paper, so this could be under five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, I live at two, two A Bluegrass Circle in Lebanon. My name is Clyde Roundtree, I'm with Huddleson Steel Engineering. First, thank you for your time and consideration in this request. It's been a long and lengthy process, and I want to credit Mrs. Benz for her patience. As you can see, it's been over years trying to see this rezoning happen. Also, I want to thank the planning staff from the county and working with us. I'd like to thank the Buchanan members who've been very active in this process, trying to help protect their interests as well. And the Huddleson Steel planning team works very hard to try to make this request come through, and there's been several people from TDOT that have been participants and try to bring some clarification on the Eps Mill interchange and see if that is possibly or when that possibly can be upgraded. So I just wanna, I just have a brief PowerPoint presentation, just to kind of let you see the process and kind of how it morphed as time went by. If you could fire that up, please, there's only four slides. Slide number one basically represents the original request, and that was for all eighty-three acres to be zoned, EAC. We came before Planning Commission with that. Obviously, it brought a lot of resistance and the Buchanan community had a lot to say about their concerns, but in that process, it helped us bring something to the table that we began to discuss and find out exactly what they were concerned about. So slide number two begins to show you our response. And really, the primary concerns was respecting the rural character of the surrounding community, trying to protect the character of Manchester Highway, and trying to keep as much of the potential industrial users away from that highway so that the rural character could be preserved. So with that, Mrs. Benz elected to take eleven acres out of her rezoning requests, leave that as RM, and then we decided to create basically a technical way of trying to preserve a scenic corridor along Manchester Highway. That's what's represented by those two rectangle, red rectangles next to Mrs. Benz's property. With that in mind, the thought was is that would create a buffer that would allow the character of the highway to be preserved. Slide, the next slide, please. There is still some resistance related to, is that enough of a protection in terms of keeping the character of the highway intact? And so Mrs. Benz elected to say, that's fine, let's just go ahead and leave it all RM. And at that point, there's seventeen acres that was committed towards, just basically pulled out of that EAC request. And so you can begin to see, but again, the goal was accomplished to keep the Manchester Highway character consistent, to try to protect the rural character of the Buchanan community, and also Mrs. Benz being flexible in order to allow this to happen. And slide number four. This was the final concession, and this was really made in a room with leaders, some key leaders from the Buchanan community. And really, what this did was allow there to be a significant buffer between the EAC zone and Manchester Highway. It allowed, in some ways, for Mrs. Benz to keep the residential community character of her own property so that they, that would provide a buffer as well. And really, the preservation of Manchester Highway would be preserved, and that was a major concern with the Buchanan community. So our request tonight is to respect the process and realize that we're looking for roughly fifty-nine to sixty acres to be rezoned, EAC, to allow the remaining acreage to remain RM. And we feel like this is a consistent request with the overall comprehensive plan for the county. We know the EAC zone is a zone that's in question because of the potential user that could be there, but we also realize there's other safeguards in the process, site planning process, interaction with the planning staff, to do our best to protect what may happen out there from the Buchanan community's perspective. We also realize that Eps Mill Road is a priority for TDOT, that they're concerned about making sure that interchange is something that can support the development that's bound to happen. And we feel like the planning staff has been excellent through the process, but the EAC zone is really their recommendation. They feel like that's the best use for creating jobs in this area. And so our request is simple. We just ask you to approve our zoning request for EAC for sixty acres on Mrs. Benz's property. With that, I'm here for any questions you may have.
Are there any questions before we proceed with the other people that wish to speak? Okay, so thank you very much, sir. All right, we're still in the public hearing and we'll allow those that wish to speak for or against, and if there's someone that wishes to speak for those that are opposed to this, and I think Mr. Marlin has a presentation, so give us your name and address, Mr. Marlin, and proceed with your comments.
Good evening. My name is Ricky Marlin, seventy-eight, sixty-eight Blankenship Road, Christiana. Brian, you got, yeah, all right? Thank you. So I come tonight representing the Buchanan Community Alliance. We formed in the year of two thousand and twelve, when this rezoning first came up for issue, and this is our mission statement and some of our goals here. We represent the Buchanan community as a collective voice. We want to be active in community affairs like tonight, and we want to protect our rural atmosphere with respectable, smart growth. Next slide. So I do- So I do come to unite representing almost a hundred families in the Buchanan community, and some of those are here tonight, some of them couldn't make it. I am speaking for them tonight as a collective voice. We're committed to working on this rezoning and future rezonings in the area. And I will have to say it's been a very well-run process, and I agree with Mr. Roundtree to respect the process, and we really have learned from this, I think both of us. And it's been a, it's really been a pleasure being able to actually do negotiation and respectful negotiation and compromise. You don't get that sometimes in other governments, I guess. We have compromised, and we want to work with existing business owners, landowners, stakeholders in the community in the future, and I'll get to that in a minute. We do have some concerns with the general area out there, and still with this rezoning in particular, but we're not coming tonight to fight this rezoning any further. We have compromised, but I did want to lay out some air, just to make, introduce our community alliance to you and also tell you some concerns about that area out there and some of the things that we need done. EAC, as Mr. Roundtree mentioned, is, was developed in the new comprehensive plan, I guess in 2013 when it passed. And while being, we feel like it's just too open of a zoning. It allows just about everything you could, in our opinion, in a business or commercial or industrial, everything but heavy industrial, and it actually allows heavy industrial by special exemption. So, and it's right next to RM, everything that surrounds this property is RM. And so we feel like we could do a little, maybe a little bit better job. We're not beating up EAC here. I'm not coming tonight to beat up anybody in the planning department or the people that voted on it. But we would like to see it reviewed to be, reviewed for possible particular types of zonings, like commercial neighborhood district and others. Next slide. This is an overview of the property and the area. And if you can see, the part in yellow, of course, is the original rezoning that Mr. Roundtree mentioned. But the areas in green are other EAC zonings out there. And the majority of EAC zoning in the county is at this interchange. I believe it was, I can't remember Doug for sure, but it's upwards of ninety percent in the county or something. But we've got three-hundred-and-sixty-nine acres already zoned, EAC, out there. The large, vast majority of that is undeveloped land, and we're going to add another fifty-nine, it looks like, tonight out there. So that's a concern for us. Next slide. This is just an illustration of what you could have right next to each other. You could have the EAC, this is a picture of Amazon, right next to our houses out there. So in planning and stuff like that, we feel like we got to, got to be able to have some type of buffer in between that, some kind of step down in between those two. Next slide. Same thing, existing house, trust truck traffic right there at the interchange. So just, those don't really coincide, in our opinion. Next slide. This is aerial view of the Loves Truck Stop, and see if I can get this to work. If you can see, it's not going to be able to see it up there. But north of, north of, up at the top up there is the, there you go, thank you, Brian. The area is that it's going to be rezoned. And so it's just to give you a little bit better illustration. We want to kind of get that buffer established there. Next slide. Current road conditions out there, Joby Jackson is what we're comparing it to. Joby Jackson is a five-lane interchange. This exit has twenty-nine feet, no shoulders, no place to get off the road, built in the early seventies, of course. Heavy volume from the interstate. A third percent of the traffic, by the traffic study, is trailer truck traffic out there. Same thing at the interchange, of course, no surprise. But that's a lot of heavy trucks crossing that interchange. It makes it hard to get in and out of Loves. Next slide. This is aerial view. This just illustrates, we did have a third truck stop approved for that interchange. I believe that plan has died now, but thank goodness it didn't come in. It's pretty bad out there right now. But that's also where I mentioned the three-hundred-and-sixty-nine acres already zoned, EAC. We're going to add another fifty-nine, it looks like, tonight, so four-hundred-and-twenty-four acres or something like that. Four-hundred-and-twenty-eight is what we're going to have out there. So we got a great opportunity, though. We're looking at this in the future and really coming to unite. We've got a good opportunity to paint our picture out there and to look at an overlay or gateway district out there. Next slide. So that's what we're asking for tonight, ladies and gentlemen. We're asking for a committee to be formed to look at this one-mile radius of the interchange for specific zonings or maybe possible change zonings of that area out there. And talking to Doug today, it looks like he's got, he just mentioned it's on the agenda for 2016. So we're asking for your support in that and helping to see this through. Next slide. These are just some of the goal statements in the comprehensive plan. I just want to make you aware of this, that we'd be following the comprehensive plan by doing what we're talking about on the gateway, recognizing the history of the Buchanan area. Next slide. Right there, it talks about, in goal statement number six, about an overlay district out in this area. Next slide. In the meantime, though, we want to be careful about what we do approve out there. And I'm not just talking about this rezoning. I'm talking about the existing zonings and when they come to site plan review. Until that infrastructure's in place, we need to be very careful about what we put out there. Next slide, please. Oh, can you go back to that slide? Also, in that slide, go back, yeah, about the gateway district there. That's also in the comprehensive plan. So we've done our work already, thanks to y'all, in the past. Now we just need to take advantage of those opportunities. Next slide. Maintain enhanced community and regional partnerships. This is an opportunity to also partner with the city of Murfreesboro because they provide sewer out there and the county and TDOT, and really make this interchange. I know the mayor has been involved with Jim Tracy about trying to get this on the, on the money appropriated at the first of the year, and he's going to introduce some legislation in that effect. So we look forward to that. We were trying to do this back in 2012 and 2013, and good things come to those who wait, I guess. So we're here now, it looks like. Next slide. This is a couple examples of the type of zonings besides EAC that could be out in that area. Commercial neighborhood district helps limit that transition point there, proximity to rural residential areas right there. Next slide. Same thing with commercial services district. You can go ahead and go to the next slide. So last slide, so Mayor, I think I did pretty good. Doug said I did really good compared to the last couple meetings. All right, so the conclusion here is, for all these reasons, until the interchange in Epsomille Road is improved with adequate infrastructure, this area needs to be very carefully developed with a high degree of oversight. And good thing we've got that with Doug and the planning department. So I just want to reemphasize that, though. We need to be very careful until we can hopefully get this overlay or gateway district committee formed and working on the project. And that's my second there. We respectfully ask that y'all help support that and help keep us on track on that. And then once all that's done, we look forward to having good, we're spark, spark? Can't speak now. Smart, responsible growth in the area. And we look forward to being involved in that, and we're committed for the long term. We formed our group for long-term efforts in the county and in the Buchanan community especially. So we need and ask for your support tonight on that, and I'm glad to hear Doug has already got that on the agenda. But we just want to reemphasize how important that interchange is. It's a south gateway into the county. We have a very good opportunity to paint our picture, make it nice, make it good landscaping, good buffers, good places for job growth, good places for the residents of that area and people going to Atlanta and coming back from Chattanooga and all that good stuff. If you have any questions, I'll take them, and thank you for your time. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Marlin? All right, are there others here that wish to speak for or against this request? All right, come forward and give us your name and address and make your comments.
Mayor Burgess, County Commissioners. I'm not actually here to speak for or against, but just to bring something to light to you all tonight while y'all considering this piece of property.
Name and address, so we can put it in the record.
This is Bill, I'm Bill Jakes, I live at two-two-four North Manny Avenue. So I'm a city dweller, and so this kind of flew under my radar. It wasn't until your October meeting hit the newspaper that I even heard about this. I am, you know, lifelong resident with a lot of deep roots in this town, and the reason this is important to me is actually there's a family cemetery of my ancestors on this property. It's hard to find, and I'm afraid there's probably some unmarked graves on this property. But there are two tombstones, and fortunately for this project, the connector road that leads in behind the firearms place and all that leads very close to it. So I really just wanted to bring it to y'all's attention tonight that there is an important piece of history on this property that I'd very much like to see saved and preserved. There are only two marked graves on the site. One of them is a Woodman of the World tombstone that looks like a tree stump, and it's surrounded by cedar thicket. And then the other tombstone basically is a cap block with the name engraved in it. It's my great-great-grandparents. So like I say, really not for or against. I don't want to interrupt this process, but I do want to see to it that this little piece is protected inside of this property.
Thank you, Mr. Jakes. I believe there are proper rules and regulations in place that would require the protection of that cemetery. Mr. Demossi is agreeing with that. But thank you for noting that. Anyone else that wishes to speak? Okay, if there's no one, yes, here comes another gentleman. No, I'm not, he's exiting the building. Come on forward, young lady. No, I saw, this young man went out the door, and I didn't see you coming forward. Come forward and tell us who you are and your name, address, and please make your comments. Okay. All right, Mrs. Hayes, is that correct? All right, make your comments. Thank you.
Pleasure to meet and greet each of you this evening. I'm appreciative of the opportunity. In our democracy, that we have such an opportunity to speak and to speak out when we have reason for opposition. I think that the unity that has been progressively strong with the Buchanan Community Alliance, which was formed rather quickly, organized with the thanks to Rick Marlin as the president. I'm the treasurer, and we do have a group of officers. Some of them could not be here this evening. So we appreciate very much Ms. Benz, Brenda Benz, working with us, Mr. Roundtree meeting with us privately at the Huddleston office. We feel like we've made a great deal of progress from both sides. Neither side has been a hundred percent. But I want to thank them for their recognition in respect to the homeowners and the lifestyles of this community. They would not have formed with such force and shown such integrity of purpose, not just for our own lifestyles and the preservation and protection of our community's home values and the lifestyles that most of us have moved there, the ones that have not had land through heritage for, such as Rick Marlin, for probably a hundred years. But it's more than the integrity of our properties and our lifestyles. We are interested in Rutherford County. And as I had mentioned in one of the other meetings, there is a saying, "Proper planning prevents poor performance." I do so much appreciate hearing that Doug did listen and did hear and did comprehend and add this to consider a planning committee to look into this gateway, because we have a vision, not just to preserve selfishly for ourselves a rural community, but by far, we are looking into the future of the progressive growth to Rutherford County. If you'll go to the north, the first exit you see entering Rutherford County is Waldron Road. There's great commerce there, there's great industry there. You have a lot of fast food restaurants there, but it is an eyesore. That's not the way we want our county represented on the south side, especially when you have such a beautiful highway that thus far has not been defaced by heavy industry and low-grade hotels or motels. The type of commercial that would lower not just the property value but could become eventually a threat to our security and increase crime rate, because obviously a low-end hotel is going to be low-rate, and I don't have to draw that out as to what all that brings. We also, as Rick had pointed out, we're looking at upgrading our zoning more to a commercial village. And I'm sure that you're well aware of the things that are going on in Williamson County and even in Murray County, and the developments there where they have converged and they have merged together the condominiums, the nice homes that are in the four, five, six, eight-hundred-dollar, a thousand-dollar category. And they have merged that with commercial. You have anything from a veterinary clinic, and so many people have indoor pets these days. So it's not just looking to the farm animals of a rural community. You also have dentistry, you have salons, you have little restaurants, and you have the types of convenience stores and natural food stores that complement an area that is primarily populated by people and their homes and their lifestyles for many years. That's the reason they have bought in those areas, is so they could have the quality of life that that lifestyle offers. If you come in with EAC and you break light industrial, and you've already got all of this other EAC, not only are we continuing to deal with emissions of air pollution, noise pollution, light pollution, the traffic, and the additional lowering of the quality and the value of the life, lifestyles of the people in this area. So our vision is not to take away, but to add to the community at large. And for Rutherford County, at least from the south side, we can't change Waldron Road, but we have an opportunity to make the south side a gateway into Rutherford County that we can be proud of. And if you'll look into something as simplistic as what they've done in a little area like Nolansville, that was nothing more than a dust bowl in the middle of nowhere, and they have taken that and made the community or the commercial village a reality. And it's lovely, and it blends with the community. Now, if you want to go to a higher scale in Williamson County, you've got West Haven. And that's almost like a park, a commercial area, and your living area all combined. It's beautiful. Now, you'd say, well, we don't have that much that we want to put into this particular area. So let's just look at following through with the plan that is now in place, to put a panel together, to look at this from the standpoint of not just protecting our own, which we obviously want to do, as any of you would want to do in your own neighborhoods, but we want the proper preparation for reasonable planning and progress for Rutherford County. And since that is the last exit of this county, and Church Street's got a ways to go. I mean, their hotels are rundown, they've got a truck stop there, they've got a lot of fast food. About the only thing it's got going for it right now is Cracker Barrel. And you have Ashone's, and it's just really, it's a very congested area, as you know, if you've tried to get across that area. And their thoroughfare is, I think, a four-lane, and so it's much wider than ours. You imagine putting more truck stops in our area or more of the types of fast food chains like McDonald's, and there's another one there with another truck stop. I think you have Dollar General. But we could, we could take what we've got and with proper planning, add to that and make it an area that Rutherford County can be. make it an area that Rutherford County can be proud of, and it could be an entryway into our county. So this gateway, as we call it, we are wholeheartedly interested in staying part of that, and I hope you will allow us to do so. And we're not trying to fight anything, we're just asking for your cooperation and consideration of perhaps adjusting that zoning to something that is less likely to become eventually an eyesore. As far as commerce is concerned, we've got plenty of area in Rutherford County that we can have light industrial or manufacturing and heavy industrial. That is not on behalf of ourselves or people, but as a citizen of this community, we pay not only for ourselves, but for the community. So, we're interested in the community, and we're trying to promote the city.
Thank you. Anyone else wishes to speak? Okay, no one else is coming forward, so we're going to declare the public hearing closed. Do we have a motion concerning this request? Mr. Jernigan has made a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Commissioner Phillips, now is there further discussion from anyone? If there's no further discussion, then, all of you in favor of this motion to approve this request, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, again, that is unanimous, thank you very much. All right, we do not have reports from the Health and Education Committee, or the Property Management Committee, or the Public Safety Committee, or Public Works. So we're now down to our Steering Legislative and Governmental Committee. Commissioner Gooch, we have one resolution there that you wish to present.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Fellow Commissioners, the resolution that Steering is submitting to you is a resolution to end accrual of sick and annual leave for elected officials and have the definition of elected officials included in the Rutherford County handbook. Whereas, Mr. Chairman, elected officials of Rutherford County are paid at least the required minimum salary per Tennessee Code annotated, and whereas, accordingly, elected officials are paid whether they are at work or not and are not entitled to accrual of sick and annual leave. And whereas pursuant to rules and regulations of Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System, elected officials are not entitled to service credit for accrual leave. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that elected officials are not entitled to accrual of sick and annual leave. Be it further resolved, the definition of elected officials be included in the Rutherford County handbook, which shall read, "An elected official shall be someone elected to office in a county general election, and specifically include the county mayor, trustee, successor, register of deeds, county mayor, excuse me, county clerk, circuit court clerk, road superintendent, and sheriff. Resolve this the 12th day of November 2015. Not so moved, Mr. Chair."
Second, Commissioner Sereno. Any questions or discussion? All right, there being none, all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Is there any other business anyone wishes to bring before this body? Commissioner Peeg, and then Commissioner Schaefer.
Kitchell Volunteer Fire Department is having a ham breakfast November 21st, so that's not this coming weekend, but November 21st from 6:00 to 10:00. Like all of you to come out if you're able. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Schaefer.
And you can whet your appetite for November 21st by coming up to Laverne for the rescue squad ham breakfast, starting at 6:00 a.m. on Gamble Lane, right off the Old Nashville Highway, this Saturday.
Right, thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Allen.
First of all, I just want to say, those of you who were not able to attend the groundbreaking today for the John Coleman Elementary School, you really missed a great event. You know, the children, the teachers, they're all just so appreciative and so excited about this overdue opportunity for a new facility out there, and it just reminds us of why we serve. It makes everything else worth it when you, when you're at those events and you see those faces. I do want to tell you about a couple of events coming up in Smyrna. On December the 6th, at 2:00 p.m., we have the Smyrna Christmas Parade. If you're interested in having a float, you have until November 20th to get registered for that. And then on December the 12th, we're having Santa at the Depot. There'll be a professional photographer available. For $5, you get a digital image with the photographer release that you can do with it, whatever you'd like. We'll have carriage rides. We learned our lesson last year. We have two carriages this year instead of just one. We'll have fire pits and smores, and so it's really a great time. So it's from 5:00 to 8:00 on December the 12th.
Mr. Dodd.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Mayor, Greenhouse Ministries is having their turkey drive. We're receiving turkeys on November the 19th, that's a Thursday. Due to lack of refrigeration, we're going to try to do it all in one day, and the next day, December, excuse me, November the 20th, we will be having our mobile food pantry. It can take volunteers for both of those events. Please check the Greenhouse Ministries website for times. Thank you.
Very much. Commissioner Reed.
Don't know how many of you have your meal planned for Thanksgiving, but this Saturday, we invite you out to the Rockvale Community Center, where the Rockvale Ruin Club will have their annual turkey shoot, and you've got the opportunity to be there at 10:00 to either get you a turkey, a ham, or slab of bacon, if you happen to hit the target in the proper place. And if you just want some real good conversation, there'll be a lot of us standing around the fire and get you a chance to meet some grassroots community supporters standing there in their camouflage and Carhartts. So come on out, we'd like to have you there to be a part and be a part of getting your Thanksgiving dinner taken care of.
All right, is there any other business? All right, there being none, thank you very much. We are adjourned.